So we're good. Okay, we will go ahead and get started. Everyone have on their microphones?
Yes.
And hopefully, we can leave that. Oh, that was great.
I have to speak like, like there's no microphones.
So, welcome to the August 28th, 2023 Town of Ithaca Board Meeting. Pam Blywos is unable to join us this evening, and I'm expecting Bill Goodman to show up at any moment. So we will start with a couple of presentations. So we have Grayson Schaidmichel here from the Community Science Institute. So come up to the table. As long as you talk in a good voice, you should be fine. There's a microphone there already. So welcome.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me in one of my favorite places in the whole world, the town of Ithaca. And I don't say that to every town board that I visit. I promise it's really true. So as Supervisor House said, my name is Grayson Schidemanal, and I'm the Executive Director of Community Science Institute. If you're familiar with CSI, I might be a new face to you. I just joined as the Executive Director about a year and a half ago, replacing our founder. So for those of you who aren't familiar with CSI, our mission is to empower communities to protect water quality through volunteer stream and lake monitoring. And we do this monitoring mostly in the Cayuga Lake watershed, but in the surrounding regions as well. We have four distinct monitoring programs. Our longest running program, which has been going on for 20 years, over 20 years, excuse me, is our Synoptic Stream and Lake Monitoring Program, where volunteers go out and collect samples in groups from their designated stream three to four times a year. We have our bio monitoring program where volunteers collect samples of ventic macroinvertebrates to determine the ecological health of a stream. We have our Cayuga Lake Harmful Algal Bloom Monitoring Program where volunteers patrol the shoreline of Cayuga Lake for harmful algal blooms. And then we have our Red Flag Monitoring Program where volunteers do measurements stream side. The samples that are collected through these monitoring programs are analyzed in our state certified water testing lab, which means that the results that we produce are regulatory quality. The data that we collect from these monitoring programs is then published on our public water quality databases on our website. So this is available for anybody to access. And one of the strengths of our programs is that we have a huge network of volunteers working with us, and this allows them to become stewards of their local water resources. So I brought a handout for you all there at the ends of the tables, and I know that Paulette also scanned them for you. On that handout, you'll see a map that shows all of our monitoring sites in the town of Ithaca. We have over 30 sites and an extensive network of volunteers doing monitoring in the town of Ithaca, including monitoring on Fall Creek and Six Mile Creek, which are both drinking water sources for Cornell University and the city of Ithaca, respectively. Our volunteers are doing monitoring upstream and downstream of the Cornell University Four Hole Observatory to see how it might impact water quality. And we're also doing water quality monitoring in Buttermilk Falls State Park. So you asked me all to share what we've been up to in 2023 and what we hope to accomplish in the next year. So so far in 2023, we've continued our routine monitoring throughout the watershed, including the town of Ithaca. And in fact, we formed a new Synoptic Stream Monitoring Partnership in the village of Cayuga Heights to investigate high chloride levels that we found in those streams. We also released our Cayuga Lake Habs database, which was generously funded by Tompkins County Health Department. And on this database, folks from the public can access data on our Cayuga Lake Habs that have been reported to CSI since 2018 and also see up to date information about the most recent blooms that have occurred. We've also produced fact sheets about the water quality indicators that we monitor through our various programs so that we can help put the data into context for folks who might not be as familiar with the science of water quality. We also worked with some Cornell students to learn how we can make our 4H2O Youth Education Program more accessible and inclusive to kids in our community. We also submitted materials about our Red Flag Program and groundwater database to the Tompkins County History Center for them to use in their upcoming exhibit on the history of fracking in Tompkins County. We worked with two research labs at Cornell to investigate patterns in Cayuga Lake Habs. And continuing in this spirit of collaboration, we also regularly collaborated with our partners at the Cayuga Lake Watershed Network and the Cayuga Lake Watershed Intermunicipal Organization. I meet at least quarterly with those organizations, but usually monthly to bi-monthly at this point. One of our most exciting collaborations this year is we worked on a DEC grant application together to create an interactive data visualization project for the Cayuga Lake watershed. And that will help us to identify hotspots in different pollutants throughout the watershed, so things like nutrients, salts, and E. coli. We also, in the spirit of collaboration, worked with an apprentice from the Learning Web who created infographics about common water testing questions. We started a new branch of volunteering for the folks in our community. So we recruited new and existing volunteers to help with the sample transport from throughout the watershed. And finally, we gave presentations to stakeholders such as the Tompkins County Soil and Water Conservation District. And we also tabled at events, including the Ithaca Fishing and Conservation Day at Boynton Middle School and the Ithaca Farmers Market. So that's what we've been up to this year, quite a bit of things in addition to our regular routine monitoring. And we have some high hopes for 2024 as well. First and foremost, in continuing our mission is to engage volunteers throughout the watershed in our regular stream and lake monitoring so that we can maintain our long-term water quality data sets. This is really helpful in terms of identifying trends and changes in water quality over time. We also want to continue collaborating with partners in our community and specifically with stakeholders such as municipalities, soil and water conservation districts, and nonprofits to help them monitor the effectiveness of restoration initiatives. We also want to make updates to our public water quality databases so that they can be more user friendly, so more folks can get their hands on that data. We're also planning to offer precipitation monitoring as a way for volunteers who might be unable to participate in our other programs due to mobility limitations, transportation restrictions, or time restrictions. Perhaps somebody is working a nine to five. It's a difficult program to be involved with. So we're going to offer rain gauge monitoring for those volunteers to expand participation. Next, we'll implement suggestions from our 4H2O Program Review to make this program more accessible and inclusive to kids in our community. And last but not least, CSI will be undergoing its first ever strategic plan in 2024. We're just getting started now. And this will help us learn how we can better serve our community. So thank you so much to the Town of Ithaca for your consistent support of CSI throughout the years and also for considering our continued funding request for 2024. I'm so grateful for all the great work that you all do in our community. And if anybody has any questions about Community Science Institute or about the work we're doing now or in the future, I'd be happy to take.
I have two questions. Is there any midlake sampling or is it mostly shoreline and tributary sampling?
So we do some in-lake sampling. So through our 4H2O Youth Education Program, we partner with Discover Cayuga Lake. And three times a year, we take kids out on the lake and collect water samples. And those water samples do get analyzed in our state certified lab. And you can find the results of that monitoring on our database under Cayuga Lake.
Yeah, approximately how many locations?
There's nine locations throughout the lake, and some of them are surface of the lake and some of them are deep samples. So they might look like just one location, but there's actually two.
Okay, my second question has to do with the frequency of sampling at similar sites to establish kind of baseline data for future comparison. Is there enough regularity in your data set to allow for that to be used to compare future conditions?
Yeah, great question. So we do our monitoring in this region, in the town of Ithaca, about four times a year. So our inlet Fall Creek and Six Mile Creek group all sample four times a year. And that is much more regularly than anybody else's monitoring. For example, the DEC is only required to do monitoring every, once every 10 years per drainage basin. So it's much, it's much better baseline data than the state is able to provide.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Oh. Yeah, so that kind of relates to my question, which was, we know there's a big concern that Cayuga Lake needs its TMDL for the U.C. And once we get that, it sounds like it would be data from CSI that we would be comparing that to determine what the needs are for. If you, he's only monitoring it a year.
Yes, right? Yeah. So in fact, CSI's long-term data from Fall Creek was used to validate the model that was made for the TMDL. And CSI also responded to the draft TMDL with some suggestions about maybe where some overestimates and underestimates were made. And yes, that is the intention, that CSI's data can be used to help inform the management moving forward once the TMDL is released. So basically, if we're showing that the phosphorus is maybe not as high as has been suggested, it could help with the de-listing of Cayuga Lake from the TMDL. And in fact, CSI data was used to do that, I believe it was in 2014. Cayuga Lake, the southern portion, was listed as impaired for pathogenic bacteria, and CSI data was used to help remove it from the 303D list.
Any other questions?
Just, yeah, thank you for the important work you're doing. I think that on the map, the source of drinking water for the town of Ithaca is actually in the town of Ithaca. On this map, and I think that it would be good if you could indicate it, since you have the other drinking water sources. It's on the east shore of Cayuga Lake in the town of Ithaca.
Ah, yeah, of course, yeah.
Or maybe a little above. The lake should be called out.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, Sydney, and certainly as we consider the budget, we know your request is there for ongoing funding for 2024.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Good evening. And Kristen Wells is here from GADABOUT. Good evening.
Good evening. I love coming to these. I serious, I seriously do. So since 1976, GADABOUT has been providing accessible transportation to older adults and people with disabilities. I like to come to these to kind of dispel some rumors or what you may have as misconceptions about GADABOUT. So you might see our buses out there tooling around. We have more than one bus that's on the road every day. On any given day, there's 12 to 17 vehicles on the road taking older adults and people with disabilities where they need to go within Tompkins County, including medical appointments, but not limited to medical appointments. So we take people to grocery stores. We take them to visit friends and family. Medical is a big portion of what we do. However, it is not the only thing that we transport, the only purpose that we transport people. So what have we been doing this year? First of all, I'd like to go back to 2020, when the world stopped turning, COVID hit. GADABOUT's wheels did not stop turning in 2020. We had a bunch of wonderful partnerships that were made. People still had to get to life-saving treatments. We were still taking people to cancer treatments, to dialysis, just because the world stopped. It was their lives that were on the line, so our wheels kept rolling. We did, were able to take advantage of the PPP loans to help keep our drivers and staff fully staff during the time of the pandemic. A lot of the partnerships that we made during the pandemic still hold to today. We partnered with the Southern Tier Food Bank, United Way, Enfield Food Pantry, and the Salvation Army to deliver boxes of food to people that were either quarantined or did not have access to food. We also partnered with the Child Development Council to deliver boxes of baby supplies to people that were either homebound or could not afford to or get child supplies. And as the pandemic evolved, our GADABOUT service evolved as well. So as things were winding down, people were getting out and about. The vaccines came about. We worked with Tompkins County and the Health Department, which is now Tompkins County Whole Health, to get folks to vaccines. So we actually still provide free transportation to anyone regardless of age or disability to get a vaccine. We also are currently partnering with Enfield Food Pantry to get folks that need assistance to the Enfield Food Pantry free of charge to those residents. So those are some of the great things that came about with COVID. But I think the biggest thing for us, the lesson was learned, is that how we can evolve as an agency as times change to evolve with the community needs, you know, beyond just going and taking people door to door for accessible service. We turn to serving the community as a whole regardless of age or disability. And don't get me wrong, our target, our target population is still older adults and people with disabilities. But you know, as ridership decreased, we were able to utilize our resources and put them in place to better serve the community as a whole and those that really needed it. So up and coming. We have been working for the last four years on procuring a new scheduling and dispatch software system. Our current scheduling and dispatch software system is a very manual process. Someone calls in the ride. One of our call takers will take it. They will enter into the system. And right now, hopefully she's finished with it, my scheduler is wrapping up tomorrow's schedule. So we utilize both paid and volunteer drivers to accomplish getting folks where they need to go on any given day. We could schedule 200 to 300 trips. So it's a very difficult and time-consuming task. And this is without aid of GPS in the buses. Our drivers still have paper manifest. When we need to radio a driver, we pick up the radio and we call and tell them, hey, your next pickup is a cancel or you need to cancel Sally at 3 o'clock. With a new system, we will have GPS in the buses. Our drivers will have turn-by-turn directions. Those cancellations will go through automatically to the tablets on the buses. Our drivers will no longer carry paper manifest. And something that's really neat is that at the end of the day, we normally have our passengers call to get their pickup times for the following day. They don't have to. We're still going to schedule their trip anyways. But it's helpful to have folks out there ready to go when we come to pick them up. The new system will actually, the rider can opt into it, and they can either get a call or a text message with their pickup times. The main goal of this new system is to streamline those cancellations, get them to the drivers, open up those pockets so we can accommodate some same-day trips. That has been a goal of mine for the last 10 years, is to be able to accommodate same-day trips for our passengers. Because as of right now, there is no other agency in Tompkins County that can provide accessible, low-cost transportation services. There is no duplication in service for GADABOUT. And it's not just for older adults and people with disabilities, but we have people that get into car accidents and need our services temporarily to get to doctor's appointments, physical therapy, to get their groceries. Our drivers will carry, you know, their groceries and sit them at their doorstep. Things like that. It's an added service that you're not going to find with a taxi that can be really expensive. And public transportation won't carry your groceries and take them to your door for you. So I'm really looking forward to maybe being able to provide same-day transportation to folks. And we're very close to getting this new system implemented. We're actually working on our last data transfer of all of our current rider information, which includes standing orders. If somebody has to go to work or if somebody has a doctor's appointment three days a week, like dialysis, they're automatically in there for a standing order. They just need to call and get their pickup time. But all of this information is stuff that needs to be transferred over to the new system. So they're working on that data transfer, and then after that happens, our office will be actually using both systems in tandem. So next year, we, by the end of this year, we hope to have that new system in place. And next year, we could start working on accommodating some same-day transportation, especially to urgent cares.
I forget, are all your drivers voluntary?
No, we do have paid staff. So GADABOUT started in 1976 as an all-volunteer agency. In the mid-'80s, they had to hire their first paid driver because the demand was so great for service. Our drivers are required to have a commercial driver's license. So training for that is very time-consuming. They have to have an annual physical. They have to pass that physical. So if you have, your blood pressure's a little bit high, or if you are diabetic, or you have other underlying health conditions that would prohibit you from obtaining a commercial driver's license. So we train people. It is a lot to ask. We do have, I think, eight volunteer drivers at the moment, and we rely on those volunteer drivers. If something happens and something comes up and it's not their normal day to volunteer, they're the first ones that we call. So we don't have to tell people no when they request a ride.
Third question? Comments? Which?
Yeah, my question goes to what you referred to as standing orders. Do you currently serve standing orders at this point in time?
Oh, we do. Yep.
Because I was, I'm aware of an individual who had a regular radiation appointment once a week, same time, same day, and they were, I think, instructed to follow the schedule each successive week.
Yep.
And, well, yeah, they were. So whether or not that was supposed to happen, it happened. So I think that's, it's an important function to have, and to whatever extent you, you can sort of streamline that process. It would make the service more, I don't know, attractive to individuals. But thanks.
And it's also, there's a part of it about outreach and education. So they had their, their appointment time, and it was the same time every single week for that whole month. Yes, that is something that we could put up a standing order for.
Okay, I'll definitely send that information along. Thank you.
Yep. And we have some people that have to go to radiation every single day. And it's at the same time, 1:00 PM, every single day for half an hour. So they can call us and say, I have this appointment that I have for the next six weeks. I need to go to radiation. And what we would do is we put in the standing order. We would still encourage them to call the day before to get their pickup time. The pickup times can change depending on how many people we have that are utilizing the service. You know, if your, if their neighbor down the road calls in a trip, it's going to change their pickup time. So we always ask folks to give us a call to get their pickup times. But with the new system, they won't have to do that. They can opt in.
Okay, so it's possible that this individual misinterpreted the encouragement to call as a requirement.
Oh, yeah. Yep. If they call and make the ride request, we're going to schedule them and pick them up regardless if they call to get their pickup time or not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That list of things that you've been doing since 2020 is incredible. Wow. So I was just wondering a couple of things. Has the closure of the Ithaca Car Share affected demand for GADABOUT?
I haven't had actually anyone say, I'm taking GADABOUT because I cannot utilize Ithaca Car Share. So I don't know, honestly, and I don't, I don't want to misspeak and say, no, I haven't. I could check with my office staff and see.
But someone could be like able to drive a car, but still choose to take that.
If they had a disability or if they were over 55 or over, they could.
And the other thing I was wondering is if any of your vehicles are electric?
They are not. They are not yet. And I say yet, because it's coming down the line. Electric vehicles, I think, are great. They're wonderful. However, the replacement batteries, so expensive. I mean, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars for a replacement battery in a vehicle our size. And I still need to run the numbers to make sure that it would be a cost-effective feature for us because cost is a huge part of things. I love it that, you know, thinking of the environment and, you know, we try to be efficient with our scheduling. We try to get as many people on board as we can to make, you know, our fuel miles go the farthest that they can. However, my electricity bill has gotten up, and I'm worried about the infrastructure because we are in the transit center with TCAT, even though we are a total separate nonprofit entity from TCAT. We're lucky enough to be in the transit center, but I don't think that they have the ability to expand on the current infrastructure to be able to charge another electric vehicle.
I forget, are all your vehicles the same size or do you have a variety?
So we do have a variety. We actually are leaning towards larger vehicles. We have some vehicles that hold six seats and two wheelchairs. However, due to the pandemic, we are trying to kind of spread out passengers as much as possible in the vehicles. And we're finding that a lot more people are using wheelchairs now. So we need larger vehicles that are holding like 10 ambulatory and three wheelchairs at a time because things like dialysis and radiation treatments are becoming very popular. Unfortunately for our riders, that we need the extra wheelchair seating capacity in our vehicles. So another thing I wanted to mention with our new scheduling dispatch software, that 80% of that was funded through New York State Department of Transportation. So in addition to the town of Ithaca funding to offset the actual cost per trip for their residents, those funds are used as a matching portion for those grants. So the municipal funding actually kind of doubles and goes even farther because we use those as matching contributions.
Other questions or comments? Kristen, thank you very much for being with us.
Thank you.
It's a great service.
Thank you.
Okay, next is a public hearing regarding the noise permit application for Ithaca Beer, but an event on September 23rd, 2023. You have the permit application and a draft resolution that would either approve or deny based on our conversations. But I'll first start with opening the public hearing on this issue at 4:59. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board on this topic? You can just come up to the table.
Good afternoon. My name is Joan Geisler. I live in the neighborhood that is adjacent to Ithaca Beer property. And I've written a little something to help me remember what I want to say. At past meetings, the board members have expressed an opinion that very few individuals, as I guess evidenced by today, from the neighborhood attend the noise variance hearings, concluding that the noise from the amplified music emanating from the Ithaca Beer business is okay. I can assure you that that is not the case. People are just defeated. This has been ongoing with a slight respite during the pandemic for seven years. In talking to my neighbors recently, the people who live the closest to the property, not, not the part of the neighborhood that lives way up by Seven Mile Drive, the frequent comments are, you can't fight City Hall, so why try? Or nothing that's been said over the past seven years has made an impression on the board. Excuse me, so what's the point? And in fact, in talking with my neighbors, the prediction, the unanimous prediction of the neighbors is that this noise variance request will be approved by the board, continuing the well-established pattern of the ever-expanding scope of noise variance requests and the automatic granting of the variances by the board. The troubling aspects of the current request are a couple. The first one is, what justification can the board possibly use for granting this variance? The request falls outside of any of the reasons stated by the board for granting year after year the Wednesday evening and special event variances. It's a private party. There's no community good. It's a private party. There's no community good. The party takes place at night, long after the usual closing time of the business, and not within the quote daytime hours, unquote, as defined by the town code one eighty-four point four, during which, it seems, people are expected to tolerate some noise. The party is to last three hours, not the currently approved two hours as the concerts are. It cannot be stated that a party late at night outweighs the needs and rights of the surrounding neighbors to a peaceable and quiet environment. The second troubling aspect of this is that the stated plan to place hay bales behind the band is too vague to be useful. The height of the stack is planned to be seven feet. What is the planned depth and expanse of the bales? Does anyone even know if the stacked bales will be effective? Who will be responsible for answer, for ensuring that an appropriate plan is carried out? The variance must be denied. Furthermore, future variance requests allowing business to make an end run around the zoning regulations in place for low-density residential areas must be discontinued. The business needs to find a way to operate within the zoning regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, uh, is there anyone on Zoom who would like to address the board on this topic?
All set?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm just, I'll see again if there's anyone on Zoom. Melanie, are you here to address?
No, I'm just here listening.
Okay. Uh, and she's uh, and I see Dan is here. So if we have, let's bring this to the board. And Dan is here. If there are any questions for Dan. You know, I don't know how pertinent it is, but some of the events that we approved did not happen. Uh, but we're really looking at this in its own merit, the one on September twenty-third. Uh, so questions, comments, dialogue, anything you want to ask Dan?
Hey, Dan. So there have been some sort of mixed reports about the implementation of the mitigation, the hay bales and whatnot. Um, in your experience, have they been implemented in accordance with the permit? Have they been higher than the amplification? Oh, can you describe? I haven't been down to witness that. So can you describe how that's been carried out?
From everything that I've seen, the speakers have been below the top of the hay bales. I know Marty came out, I want to say last Wednesday, if not two Wednesdays ago, um, just to verify it. And we were there while they were setting up the band and setting up the hay bales, and he signed off on everything. So I haven't personally heard anything that, um, has been wrong, but maybe you know something I don't.
I don't know anything. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no, I haven't heard anything. I just know that Marty was out there.
Sure. I also just want to verify the date here because, uh, what's the date of this event that you're, for which you're applying?
Should be Saturday, uh, September twenty-third.
Twenty-third, okay. So typo in the reso here. Um, thanks. Other, uh, questions, comments at the board? Phil?
Um, yeah, so I was wondering about the hay bales.
It's yours.
Yeah. I was wondering about the hay bales as well because I, I had seen in, um, the letter we'd received that it sounded like the hay bales were not there. But Marty, you did confirm that they are there?
I did. I was down there and I inspected, uh, Dan's event. And they did extend, uh, the hay bales out a little bit farther, and they did elevate it above the, uh, sound-producing equipment at the time.
And, um, so my, yeah, my main concern is just the, um, length of time, eight to eleven, because eleven's kind of late, um, for many people. I'm, I'm looking for the application, but is this a live band, Dan, or is this?
Yeah. It's a live band that the, um, Cornell Lacrosse alumni were wanting to do a function down at the brewery. They wanted to go from nine P M. to twelve, and I, uh, in talking, uh, prior to putting in an application, scaled those hours back. Um, the thought was that, uh, as much as we've, we've done this in the past where I know it's a hardship to have to change the date. Um, but considering that we were approved, I think, for six bigger events this year, and we only plan on doing one other than the September twenty-third, I thought it would be acceptable to at least try to put this in so we can hold this function.
Um, yeah, I mean, I have, I have no problem adding an event, especially since some of the other ones haven't happened. But as I said, my concern is the, the lateness of the hour for the music going to eleven.
Yeah. So at this point, um, I've already scaled it back an hour. I know that it's later than we normally go. I don't know that, uh, the function will actually happen without this timeframe.
Phil, do you have anything else?
Um, well, and then the other, the other thing I just wanted to check in on, so I know I missed the, um, last meeting in May when the decisions were made on the permits, but I wondered if there had been any, um, further discussion at that meeting about the possibility of getting a, some type of a band shell or a, um, some type of a more permanent structure rather than the hay bales for the future?
But you're asking me that question?
Hey, yeah.
Yeah, I think the board was convinced that it was a very expensive proposition, so we didn't push it. I think as I recall, which is that, what you recall?
Yeah, band shells are a very expensive proposition. Can also potentially be rented on a, a per-event basis. I don't know much about the economics of that, but, um, the other issue related to the band shell is that there's no guarantee that that would satisfy the, uh, adjacent property owners. It's more or less a crapshoot. You need to have to spend a lot of money to roll the dice, and then you could find yourself in the same situation. Because we're dealing with a nuisance ordinance, not with a hard decibel level, for example. So.
That's all I had.
Then others? Questions, comments?
I had a question about the proposed resolution and the dates. It says that there was an application to hold something on Saturday the twenty-third, but now um, they're not going to hold it, but then they're going to hold it on the thirteenth. I'm not really sure.
The type, the last September, that's a typo at the end.
So it's going to be on the twenty-third?
Yes. There was nothing else scheduled or approved for the twenty-third. There were other events that we approved, but they didn't happen.
Oh, other September events that didn't?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Eric?
Can you remind me of what type of, I, band instruments, music is going to be played at? I don't have that right in front of me. Then, did you hear?
Yeah, I don't necessarily know this band. It's going to have, I'm sure, drums, guitars, uh, maybe a bass, uh, I think it's, uh, from what I understand, it's six members in the band, so. Yeah, there's probably, uh, maybe a singer, a couple of guitars, a drum, a couple of others.
And my other question is, uh, have you had any, um, discussions with the neighbors, uh, this season about any of the sounds coming from Ithaca Beer? Uh, has not, like in the past, you, you've been fairly cooperative in, in, in resolving stuff with the neighbors. Has that come up this year?
It hasn't, uh, I mean, usually it gets triggered by someone reaching out, and either the music went late or something happened. Like I said, I haven't heard anything this year. I don't know if that means that they're going to the town and not me, if possible.
Marty, I think you did get one point to this, right?
Correct.
Do you remember, was it a live music event? Because?
I believe it was a live music event. So they allege that, uh, Dan did not have the proper hay bale areas, uh, which is one of the reasons I was trying to go down and make an additional inspection.
Further questions, comments?
I'm going to move the resolution.
Uh, with an approval or deny?
Would, to approve.
Okay. Uh, and if, if we do decide to, we have to talk about findings, reviews, finding statements in previous resolutions, so we might just move them forward. But a second. Uh, the resolution, other questions, comments?
So, as I would just say, um, so we did hear in the, um, correspondence that we received that, um, I guess on some of the, um, maybe Wednesday evening events that were supposed to end at eight o'clock, that they went beyond eight o'clock. And so I would want to make sure that this one, since we're letting it go, um, so late to eleven o'clock, that it, it does end right at eleven. Um, so I don't know how we ensure that happens. Yeah. Um, I guess, I guess I can go down and I'll be, I'll be back for my vacation, so I can pull the plug.
Unless you're a Cornell Lacrosse alum, I don't know if you'll be able to get in.
Yeah.
Got to bring a stick.
Uh, other questions, comments?
I, I have a comment. Uh, I, there's been a question raised as to whether or not a private event rises to the level of having a public purpose, and I would say that we have to balance, i- it's in our, all of our interests to have, uh, healthy thriving local businesses. And I think that it is a balancing test between the needs of, of a for-profit entity and uh, adjacent property owners. And I think that we have done everything that we can to this point to try to meet that balancing test. It's not as though Ithaca Beer is not entitled to apply for a permit simply because they're in the business of selling beer and making money. So I also understand the needs of the residents, and I think that by and large, by virtue of the recorded music being turned down and monitored, uh, and the Wednesday series being limited and somewhat mitigated by hay bales, I think we are trying to massage the situation the best we can, so.
Uh, in a pretty, uh, both of us, and I think the only condition we're, we have to make sure the hay bales are still there, uh, and that the music ends right at eleven. And then the findings, um, so I need to read these three findings that we've approved before. Uh, people familiar with the findings.
I think for the public records.
Yeah, they're under, so if you want to take a quick look.
They'll be reflected in the minutes, I imagine, so it'll be a matter of public record.
Uh, are we ready to vote? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Unanimous. Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Moving on to, um, the next public hearing. This is regarding adoption of the, excuse me, preliminary open point budget. Uh, you were sent, uh, the budgets, uh, and I think we're always the first municipality to approve the budget, uh, since we, uh, are so involved. Um, so would someone like to move the resolution approving the twenty-twenty-four Southern Kuga Lake Interminus for Water Commission budget, otherwise known as voting.
Move that.
A second. Questions? Comments? Public hearing, uh, any members of the public? We opened it at five sixteen, I'll say, uh, but Melanie, I don't think you're here to address this, I regret.
Correct.
So let me just wait till the clock fixed to five seventeen, close the public hearing. Donna, did you want to say anything? Judy, did you want to say anything? The town of Ithaca is very involved, uh, in the commission, and we're, we're happy to do that. We're happy to be very involved.
Rod, I would just say that the town of Ithaca is the one that has to hold the public hearing because we're not the employer of record, but we're, we're, all their bonds and everything go through, so it doesn't go to any of the other municipalities, just us.
They have to approve the rate. They, they have to decide on what their rate increase.
Yes.
Right.
And the only other thing that I would preface is we are going to be going into contract negotiations in September. So, um, there may be changes as we go forward, so.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing at five seventeen. Uh, all those in favor of approving the budget for twenty-twenty-four, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous. Next is we're setting a public hearing. This will be for the September eleventh meeting. Uh, this is regarding a local law amending town of Ithaca Code, Town of Ithaca Coach, Chapter one forty-eight Environmental Quality Review to add all signs except off-premises signs to the type-two list. Uh, we, um, someone like to move this resolution to set the public unit? I'll move it. Is there a second? Second, bridge seconds? Uh, CJ, is there anything you want to say about this?
Uh, it's covered pretty well in the memo, and, uh, the planning committee reviewed it, I believe, up to June sixteen.
Okay, questions, comments? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Next is also setting a public hearing regarding a proposed sewer improvement, sewer improvement for the town of Ithaca pursuant to Article twelve C of town law. This is an additional boiler replacement and facility improvements. We've talked about this before. You can see in the resolution that our share of the cost would be this a bit over one point three million. Uh, Donna, do you want, remind us where the money would be coming from? I know it spells it out in the resolution.
Um, that hasn't really been determined yet, either from fund balance, or we would throw it in our next bond issue, which would be next year.
Okay. Uh, and, um, this is a public interest order, uh, so I'm going to move and Rich is seconding.
Be honored to second.
Oh, good. So questions, comments? And this is a roll call. So, um, I'm an aye, Eric? Rich?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I didn't miss anyone, did I? Unanimous. That, thanks. And number seven. So there has been some confusion about our video conferencing policy that we voted I forget when we adopted it, but we're just trying to clarify times when someone might be absent and whether they're allowed to count this quorum and or vote. Uh, so you have a memo that you have both the suggested language and the, um, rea- reasons for doing that. Uh, so remember, it, it's extraordinary circumstances, and we are making the determination that being on vacation is not an extraordinary circumstance. Well, hopefully it is for the individual on vacation. Hopefully, it's an extraordinary vacation, but it's not, uh, an extraordinary circumstance that would allow you to, uh, vote or, or be considered part of a quorum. We have also added notation about uh, special provisions if a member of the board or committee is disabled and needs a special consideration. Uh, so we are referring to the state law regarding that. And then there was a little bit of language that Susan Brock, it's just cleanup language, so it didn't change, um, what we're trying to accomplish by making this clearer. So, uh, would someone like to move, uh, the adoption of this revised video conferencing policy?
I move.
Phil, is there a second? A second. Uh, so questions, comments? Hey, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Uh, moving on, this is a study session. So moving on to committee reports, uh, so, uh, budget. Uh, any questions for budget? Um, if not, moving on to codes and ordinances.
Um, yes, we, um, we discussed the public engagement aspect of the town of Ithaca subdivision code. Um, we talked about what kind of multimedia presentations might be put up on the website, uh, what kind of press releases might be issued. Um, there was a question about the town policy on press releases that nobody in the meeting could answer. But we will fire the policy. And, um, I think that was the gist of it. We're trying to reach, uh, we found out there's eighty-three hundred and eighty-five households in the town, ninety-four percent of have a computer, eighty-nine percent of internet. We decided against mailing out notifications by mail after some discussion.
How many households, did you say there?
Uh, eight thousand, three hundred and something. Yep. So, um, we have reached a plan for how to engage the public for the subdivision regulations. CJ, do you have anything to add?
I don't think that's the highlight.
Uh, so that must have been interesting. That was a little bit of a tangent for the committee to talk about press releases.
It was, and nobody knows, um, what the, what the policy is, but we, we, we decided that staff would write the press release. Uh, CJ, the department had to review it and then it would be sent to you, Rod, also, since we're speaking for the town, a review before it was distributed to the, to the press.
Uh, yeah, we can, uh, just make sure we're all set and management team too for that process, but it sounds, okay. And we're glad that using internet and our newsletter and our website will be good. And media release.
We're a modern town.
We're a modern.
Yeah, and of course, so we'll be coordinating with, um, town clerk as public.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Uh, just coordinating with Paulette as town clerk, as she's our public information.
Any questions for codes and ordinance? Uh, personnel and organization just met, uh, this afternoon. Um, there were a couple of HR updates. Uh, we first talked about the video conferencing policy, which we were recommending to this board. Uh, we, I think this is going to come in September. Uh, a lactation policy will be brought to the board in September as will a recommendation for reclassifying our information technology, uh, position to a higher class. Um, Judy, we just met. What else should I report on?
The wage scale for the budget will be coming through, um, so.
And budget, certainly we'll be looking at that tomorrow. Uh, so, uh, it was apparently a short meeting. Uh, so any questions for personnel and organization? Uh, not Public Works met on August fifteenth. Dan presented on the Northeast I and I Study. Uh, we, Dan also presented on the Public Works Facility Mechanical and Engineering Study. We talked about a drainage request for one seventy-eight Kendall app, we're suggesting that that be closed. Um, this is interesting. We did, and I think this came to this board first and we referred it to Public Works for a dye park, uh, in, in the northeast part of town, so we're trying to get more information. I think that's how it was left, but Joe Talbot Wright is going to be getting some additional information.
Yeah, liabilities and costs of that nature.
Uh, Hillary Spohr gave an update on our, our green fleet policy. She had been working with Joe on that. There were some project updates. So it's pretty straightforward. Anything that either committee members want to mention from that or staff?
Just to correct you on the one seventy-eight, we did approve the
We did approve.
Uh, stormwater request. That's all.
Okay, thank you. And you still, we're still waiting to hear back from Cornell on the game farm road parking expansion.
That's correct.
And next, we're anticipating, I believe, at the September meeting, uh, to be talking about the street light project again in more detail. In terms of a policy. Uh, so Rich has been working on that. Uh, what, what other committees, that, any ad hoc committees? Planning, oh, planning, yes, it's good planning.
Yeah, Elbit comes before you.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we just, we continued our discussion of an application for a limited historic commercial overlay district for the Hates Chapel uh, and Schoolhouse. Um, they're hoping to expand their allowed uses to include, uh, among other things, uh, short-term rental, unhoseded, uh, short-term rental without a limit on the number of days. In consultation with our esteemed Director of Code Enforcement, it was determined that the application could be sent on to the town board for consideration. There's a, a sort of a maintenance and, uh, um, improvement, uh, repair schedule that's been agreed to. There are a couple of clarifying questions for the applicant related to the timeline for certain repairs, but everything seems to be um, in order. And so that was moved out of committee with a recommendation, uh, to the board. And that will be, I imagine, forthcoming at our September meeting. Yes, that's pretty much all we looked at, unless there are other updates you'd like to expand on, CJ?
Yeah, I would just like to add that we just received comments from, uh, Historic Preservation Planner, Brian McCracken, and City of Ithaca. So we may be able to, um, uh, have some additional amendments to that, um, previous report that we looked at. So, both of those were fun.
I know that the ad committee is, um, Mike Smith on behalf of the ad committee is working on the tour, which has been set. I, I know Mike sent out an email about that. I don't remember the date.
Friday, the twenty-ninth of September.
So we always look forward to those tours. Uh, so, uh, that would be fun. Um, other committees, any interminable committees that folks stood on, anything from Creo?
Yeah, Creo met on the twenty-third and they had an exciting guest speaker, which is the new DEC Region Seven Director, Derek who mentioned the state is looking for input on how to spend all those environmental bond act money. And the deadline for comments is September fifteenth, so I don't know if the town weighs in on things like that, but might be of interest.
Um, not sure. I'm sure we've received an email about that. I'll have to go back and look at that.
I can bump it up on your inbox.
Okay. Any other minutes?
I just have a question. Was, was there any discussion as to how the environmental bond act monies might be used for projects that could help us meet the conditions of the TMDL?
Um, this group was definitely talking to the Region Seven Director about that. And that's
So there is some potential interconnectivity there?
Absolutely. Um, and they're sort of encouraging us to make noise about how that money can be used for water quality projects.
We can make noise.
Yeah, but we don't have the TMDL for QB yet, so that's really important to get. Still waiting.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Uh, the Trails Parks Preserves Ad-Hoc Committee has not been meeting, uh, but I will mention that we are planning another tree planting event. It was very successful last fall. Uh, right now, the tentative date will, will confirm this would be October fourteenth, if October fourteenth is Saturday.
Yeah.
Uh, so, um, and it would be fairly close to where we planted the trees last year. So stay tuned if you want to come out and plant trees and we'll confirm the date later. Any other committee reports, Bill?
I'll, I'll just say, um, continuing on trails, um, we haven't had a South Hill Trail Extension meeting in a couple of weeks. Um, we had applied for, um, a project with the Design Connect Program at Cornell with Cornell students. And, uh, we're not selected, so we won't be working with them this fall. But, um, we're, we probably won't have any news on that until the end of September, which is when NICE Egg, NICE Egg said they would try and get back to us about the easement, um, language. Uh, I guess they're still in the middle of their rate case or it's coming here to an end of the rate case that they've been reoccupied with. Um, but as y'all know, we do, we are moving forward with, um, with acquiring the last parcel for the Lower Black Diamond Trail. Um, I did take Margaret on a, a quick tour on Saturday and I was thinking, um, if folks are interested and have the availability, um, maybe after the farm tour, um, if anybody's got a little few extra minutes, um, and he end up down around West Hill or that side of town, um, maybe we could pop over and, um, see a little bit of that area.
It's really amazing. It's a whole other boat that I, I've lived in, I think it's nineteen eighty-seven, I've never
Back, back behind the court right electric when you get back to the inlet there.
Any other reports from committees? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Would someone like to move?
Move.
Rich, uh, is there a second?
A second.
Bill seconds. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Anonymous. Then, I forget, was there correspondence? Uh, and just a couple of things, um, if anyone is interested in going on the Hugel Lake Boat Tour and Water Health Presentation on Tuesday, September fifth, Assemblyman Kellis will be there. The idea is that two reps from each municipality would attend. So I think, Margaret, I think you told me that you're planning on that.
There's two other seats. There are two folks that I want to go.
So if anyone's interested, it's, uh, September fifth, two to five. I know Bill will be away, um, so just let me know. I think they want to know by end of August, which is soon. Some of us met with Senator Webb. You may remember that we had met with Assemblyman Kellis, uh, maybe a month, six weeks ago, and we met with Senator Webb, a few of us, uh, last week. It was a very good meeting. She has a new office directly across the street from us, um, so that's handy. Uh, she's very interested in what we're doing, made it very clear that we should be contacting her when we have questions or just keeping her updated. So I think one idea is that we would send quarterly updates to both Assemblyman Kellis and Senator Webb. Um, just, you know, here's some things going on in the town. Here's what raised, it might be helpful. So glad we made, um, you know, obviously I think we had a very strong connection with the Assemblyman Kellis and they work very well together. Usually they're at the same events, uh, Assemblyman Kellis and Senator Webb. Any other updates uh, this evening? If not, we'll adjourn at five thirty-five. Thank you, everyone.